Good afternoon, members. It's the appointed time, a call to order the meeting of the special meeting of the Finance Committee. This session will come in three parts, we have up to six forty P M. These special meetings are held to examine the estimates of the twenty twenty five to twenty six budget. This is to ensure that the government is seeking a provision no more than what is necessary for executing approved policies. Members, please be reminded that your questions should be directly related to the estimate. And when you put questions, please quote the serial number at the top right-hand corner of the reply. If you do not get to follow up on your written reply, you can put in your supplementary questions in writing. But please get your supplementary questions in by seven P M. Your supplementary questions should be purely for following up on the government's written reply. We now welcome the Secretary for Development and her team to join us for the session. This session will be on planning and land. For the works session that will come after this part, members who would like to speak, please press the request to speak button now. Now over to Ms. Bernard Lin.
Thank you. Chairman, in twenty twenty five to twenty six, the total estimated expenditure of the Planning and Lands Branch and the departments under its purview, meaning Lands Department, Buildings Department, is about eight point oh three seven billion dollars, down twenty-three million dollars from the revised estimate from the previous year, while the number of civil service posts will decrease by one hundred and sixty-eight. We will continue to reprioritize our work, pursue internal redeployment and streamline procedures to put resources to better use. We will stick to the principle of enhancing quantity, speed, efficiency, and quality as we take forward the following tasks. On boosting speed and efficiency in increasing land supply, we will continuously create land to support the development of new industries and improve people's quality of life. When land is ready, we will consider the latest conditions and take a prudent and paced approach to launching or putting up land for various development purposes. The government will also prioritize resources for the northern metropolis. We expect to resume six hundred hectares of land in the next five years and form at least five hundred and seventy hectares of land. Therefore, the public and private sectors put together, there will be a total of sixty thousand public and private residential units to be completed, and there will also be a million square meters of economic floor space, that's for the next five years. Within this year, we will also complete the rezoning procedures for the data park in Sandy Ridge. That's for the Innovation Technology and Industry Bureau to dispose of the site in the market sooner. And within this year, we will also finalize the land use proposals for Ngao Tang Mai, New Territories North, New Town, and Mazo Long. We will also adopt more diversified development approaches. We're analyzing the expressions of interest received for the three pilot areas of large-scale land disposal in the northern metropolis. Now, from the second half of this year, we will start the tendering process progressively. We will also invite landowners to submit applications for in situ land exchange for Santin Techno later this year. Moreover, we're also going through the tendering under the two envelope approach for two sites in Yunlong and Hongshouqiu for multi-story buildings for modern industries. We have been responsive by fine-tuning the tender conditions and also extending the tender closing date to the end of July to facilitate market participation and enhance investment incentives. Now, we are looking at several ways to improve our land administration. So first, we will consider allowing landowners to voluntarily surrender their land for resumption by the government that can be used to offset the premium payable for in situ land exchange. Second, we will also consider the approach of pay for what you build. This means developers pay premium for lease modifications at rates not based on the maximum floor area, but instead based on the actual construction floor space. Thirdly, we will also consider tendencies of a longer tenure, meaning they may be longer than seven years. We will also look at ways to streamline approval procedures, especially for the administrative procedures for works already under construction, and that's to lower construction costs. In late February this year, we announced the government's land sale list for this year. After we take into account the eight residential sites available for sale and other sources, the potential private housing land supply this year will be enough for thirteen thousand seven hundred flats, similar to the annual supply target under the long-term housing strategy. The government has indicated that it will not rule out any commercial sites for sale in the current financial year. Instead, it will consider rezoning some commercial sites expected to be available for sale in the next few years to residential use or allowing greater flexibility of land use. In line with the industry-led planning approach, we invited expressions of interest from the market for three island and coastal tourism projects last year. This is the first time in recent years that the government takes forward the creation of new land parcels for tourism and recreation purposes. Now, on the expansion area of the Aberdeen Typhoon Shelter, we are looking at the market response, and that exercise, E O I exercise, will conclude by the end of this month. We will also announce the land use proposals for Longgu Tan and Tumun West. And that will include providing sites for emerging industries such as new energy, modern logistics, advanced construction, and circular economy. On quality, our priorities include urban renewal and building safety. The amended land compulsory sale for redevelopment ordinance took effect in December last year. The Support Service Centre for Minority Owners under compulsory sale also opened in August last year. And we're working with the U R A on district planning studies on Chongguan and Shengshou Po with the renewal master plans to be released within this year. We're also exploring the use of land in N D As to create more favorable conditions for future public and private sector redevelopment projects. Within this year, we will put forward the preliminary proposals. On maintaining the buildings ordinance to strengthen building safety, tackle unauthorized building works and enhance safety of construction works, we are consolidating public views. Our goal is to table this bill in the first half of next year. Finally, on leveraging harbor front resources, we will set up refreshment stalls at harbor front locations in Central, Wan Chi, Northport, and Chim Sartre this year to enrich visitors' experience after all these areas are more popular. And for the waterfront near Hongham, we will consult stakeholders, including the Panel Development, on building a marina there. Separately, we have just completed the scrutiny of the Protection of the Harbor Amendment Bill, which will resume its second reading next month. We will make good use of the streamlined mechanism to take forward works conducive to public enjoyment of the Victoria Harbour Front. I've just given members the highlights of our work, and we are happy to take questions from members.
Thank you. Forty members are waiting to speak. Mister Dennis Lo, Mister Edmund Wong, Miss Chen Yudmen, Mister Lau Kwok Fan, Professor Chau Man Kong, Doctor So Chan Wing, Mister Andrew Lam, Doctor Wendy Hong, Mister Tang Kap Hui, Mister Michael Tim, Mister Chen Haok Feng, Mister Vincent Cheng, Mister Tony Tsai, Mister Peter Shu. Let's do four minutes per member, questions and answers inclusive. We should be able to let everyone speak, so please be mindful of the time limit. We start with Mister Dennis Lo. Thank you. Oh, six, five. Now, we're looking at New Territories East, especially areas one three seven and one three two of Chongguanou, those two areas matter. Because there will be plenty of land in that area for housing. My question is about medical facilities. That is important because there are more healthcare facilities in north than Chongguanou, but we lack such facilities in the south. So for Area one three seven, something top of mind for me is do we have to wait till the population intake before we can get the facilities? We have had problems with places like Tumun and Chinshui Wei because there was a lack of public services in those areas. So I hope the government has set aside land for public amenities in Chongguanou. So let's move faster at greater efficiency. Can we provide better facilities so that people who move in can access those services so that the district can become a green and livable community? So this is about support facilities, Secretary. Chairman, the Permanent Secretary will take the question. I thank Mister Lo for his question. Area one three seven of Chongguanou, we have enough land in that area. There's land not just for flats, but also for government and public facilities, including healthcare facilities. We expect that for one site in that area, it will become a joint user complex, and that will include healthcare facilities. We have ample land in that area. So in the future, we will work with the Health Bureau and the Department of Health, we will talk to them about the need to increase healthcare facilities, not just in Chongguanou, but maybe also in Kowloon East. Mister Edmund Wong.
Thank you, Chairman.
Oh, oh, five, a question from Mister Chen Haok Feng. It's about the Support Service Centre for Minority Owners. August twenty twenty-four, we set up this dedicated office or DOS, and then we also set up the Support Service Centre to give support to minority owners. Minority owners tend to be just grassroots, and they need the help of professionals. But I'm looking at the figures, August twenty twenty-four to February this year, the Lands Tribunal received three cases, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, within three years, each year, there were twenty-nine such cases. So the support centers are giving little support. There are two to six staff members at the center. So how many cases are these workers expected to deal with? Now, the property market is slow, so there may be little activity at these centers. So will there be consolidation of resources at these centers now? I turn to oh, eight, five. It's about the waterfront to the south of Hongham. Now, how to make sure there will be no interference with the Cross Harbor Tunnel, that has been answered. And then there's a question about minimizing the impact during the construction and how we make use of the resources to meet the expenses. But I don't think that question is answered, so I hope the government can give us some update. So one, support for the compulsory the support center, and the other question is about Hongham. I think it's understandable that we don't get a lot of cases involving compulsory sale at the moment because that has to do with the broader economic context. What matters is that we have enacted this amendment ordinance to the compulsory sale ordinance, and when the moment is ripe, there will be more cases of compulsory sale. The member wondered, given the few cases we have, how we plan the manpower. Now, our plan goes like this, when we just open a center, we don't need a huge permanent establishment because in the early days, we should focus on education and publicity. We should be telling local residents how things work. Now, many professional bodies have helped us out on a voluntary basis. When more cases come along, the Support Service Center will have to hire more people to assist residents. So at this point, we're not worried about the manpower. The member's second question is about the waterfront in Hongham. There will be some replanning for the waterfront. At the panel meeting on development, in the end of this month, we will brief members on our proposal. There will be marina, there will be retail and residential development. Now, on the project estimate, that will hinge on the ultimate land use and how we pursue that project. We can consider a public-private partnership, so the government doesn't have to fund the whole project. And for Hongham, there's a pier, it used to be a warehouse, now it's lying idle. So the government's plan is to arrange minor works, we spice up the area so that the space can be enjoyed by the public and people can organize activities there. So thank you for the update.
All right, Ms. Chen Yudmen, I'd like to follow up on two questions, both of my questions. One, D E V B P L one, two, three. I asked about for the manpower handling small house applications as well as how to enhance efficiency. About one hundred officers are responsible for this area and the number of cases already exceeded the performance pledge. In the northern district, it saw the highest number of cases followed by Yunlong, a total of four hundred and fifty-one cases, whereas in the northern district, about fifty-one cases. These figures meet the performance pledge, but it fails to solve the problem of a backlog of cases in other areas. Can the administration let us know how to deal with the backlog? Another question is oh, two, one. Well, rather, oh, one, two. Regarding the northern metropolis developments, there are views that they should be expedited. I'd like to know more about the boundary control points or the development along the boundaries. The northern link spur line will provide convenience. It's connected to Hangyin Wei. For the boundary control points in a northern metropolis, there's a lot of footfall as well as cargo flow. I'd like to ask about the development of port economy, will you start work this year? For busier ports, say Hangyin Wei and Law Wu, will you redevelop these ports, is there any plan? Thank you. Regarding the stacked-up cases in relation to small house applications as well as in the B C P issues at the boundary northern metropolis, well, I'd like to give the floor to Mister Morse Lu, Director of Lands, as well as Mister Vigya, Director of the N M C O. Thank you. We do understand small house applicants are sending in a lot of applications, hence more time for handling. As we mentioned, we've been putting in place enhancement measures. We want to streamline procedures. On top of that, in recent years, we also want the district officer to act as a monitor or a supervisor to oversee the entire process. The approval process may be slower, and we may consider how to redeploy resources or to identify any room for improvement in the course of the handling of the cases. These two years, we've been putting in place enhancement measures, but we'll keep reviewing the procedures. We want to streamline the procedures and shorten the time overall. All right, another question for the N M C O, Mister Vigya. Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Chen asked about the development of the port economy. Well, we have just made land use proposal in relation to N T N New Town. We want to develop the port into port economy, one mancam toe port. We want to move the food control facilities to Hangyin Wei B C P. So mancam toe in B C P will become a primary port for primary port for passengers. In relation to Shenzhen, there will also be railway systems to provide service to the port. In Hangyin Wei B C P, it covers the priority development area P T A of the N T N New Town. We already suggested that there could be more commercial and trading activities in the area. There will also be about two hundred hectares of priority development area near the B C P. From a more macro perspective, say in Longmachao B C P, we will see the commissioning of Santin Techno Pope. It will be an industry-led industrial land use, is in close vicinity to Longmachao B C P and Longmachao's spur line, Fuitian Port. More generally speaking, we have a railway linking between Nansha, Tianhai, and Shenzhen and Hong Kong. So in the main area or main station area, it will facilitate the development of port economy. Thank you, next Mister Albert Lau.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up on forty-six, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-four. I'd like to recognize the efforts of the N M C O. They've done a lot on developing the northern metropolis. Since their setup on the N M C O, I believe the initiatives are being taken forward as scheduled. All of the tasks are completed according to schedule. Well, it seems we aren't doing enough to leverage on the private market. I hope the N M C O will look into the situation. Since the end of last year, most new development areas, N D A planning had detailed development plans. I'd like to know whether the N M C O will play a bigger role in execution or implementation apart from planning. Will we set up a northern metropolis council responsible for management? Or will a company be set up to drive the development in the area and to turn it into an industry? The government will put in place pay for what you build. In other words, the premium is determined according to the actual construction floor area. There is a relaxation measure to relax the figure to sixty percent. In Hongshouqiu Hachun in situ land exchange, the deadline was last year. The logistics study is about thirty-six hectares of land, and that doesn't cover land exchanges. Should that be covered under the logistics side studies? Regarding Hongshouqiu Hachun, in twenty eighteen, there was a planning sketch. It's twenty twenty-five right now. Do we need a dynamic plan? Next, on large-scale land disposal, tendering will take place soon. I hope that the government will not adopt a practice of the highest bidder wins. We should use the two envelope approach. Different scores should be given to performance or technical aspect, whereas another score could be allocated to fee bids. There are three questions in total, Secretary, could you be more succinct? Or could you take one or two questions? We'll have to manage time well. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary.
Well, just now Mister Albert Lau suggested setting up an northern metropolis authority that is responsible for the land in the N M. There are over three thousand hectares of land just in the N M. It's not just an industrial park. A lot of land is dedicated to government facilities as well as residential use. Comparing with the West Kowloon Cultural District or the Airport Island, the N M is very different, it's more diversified. If we are to set up an authority specifically for the N M, this is no easy task, nor is it the best solution. As mentioned in the policy address, the N M is industry-led, so there are different industrial parks. Should the government set up a management company for all these industrial parks? We are still looking into the possibility, and we hope to be able to put forward proposals within this year. As for Hongshouqiu Hachun, which will, I mean, the the development sketch has been finished. Do we need to dynamically review its plan? Well, indeed, we need to make adjustments to the development plan as time moves on. We are exactly doing the same. We are reviewing whether we should keep a particular area of land commercial use only, and we will also take into account the logistics site study, which is due for completion soon. So yes, we'll do more on this front. Thank you. Next member, Professor Chau Man Kong.
Thank you, Chairman, I'd like to ask about my question, D E V B P L oh, two, four. It's about in situ land exchange. As we can see, there are three N D As in the N M, Kutong, Fanlang North, Yunlong North. There are eleven cases being handled, four of which have finished with the application. A total of one billion dollars or so have been saved. Six point one billion dollars in relation to land premium has been brought to the government. There were both successful and unsuccessful in situ land exchange applications. There are different factors. In relation to seven unsuccessful in situ land exchange applications, the compensation amount, do you have any information regarding Hongshouqiu Hachun N D A? The government announced the in situ land exchange for commercial land, the deadline will be put back. Well, I have a suggestion. We need to encourage developers to invest in these sites. We need to incentivize developers. Say for the N M University Town, there will be universities alongside more people in the area. There will also be inflow of people from outside the N M. So there will be more investments into the N M. These are great incentives. Developing campuses, I believe this is very attractive. Can we plan ahead? Say for the original ninety hectares of land, can we expedite the process? Can we provide more land?
I believe the incentive is very attractive. And it will also be beneficial to public revenue. Will the government consider all these? Thank you about in situ land exchange and the relevant suggestions. Thank you. Secretary. The first question. Is about unsuccessful in situ land exchange applications. How much did we spend resuming these sites? As all of these sites are in N D As. We're using our phase one land resumption compensation is about one thousand dollars per hectare. Well, rather, one thousand dollars per square foot. For industrial land, say the NM University Town. Can we advance our planning? Lot of people are interested in investing in the NM University Town. Let's take now time may. There are total of forty hectares of land. They've been set aside for building the NM University Town. So we want to start construction works as soon as possible. We have already started public participation. We asked the public whether they agree with us on the land use for public use. In about twenty twenty-seven, we aim to start the construction works. From now to twenty twenty-seven, there is an important procedure. The Education Bureau, we explore a total of ninety-odd hectares of land in the University Town. How how is the Bureau going to distribute the. Pieces of land in the University Town to different universities or to different disciplines? If we can start the land formation works, then financing. Um and planning can take place in parallel. We need to take a two-pronged approach. We need to quicken the pace. I agree that it's attractive if we can use part of the area in the NM to be private residential sites. Some developers are interested in in situ land exchange applications as well. We need to um put in place the pay for what you build approach. We hope to put forward. A proposal later this year. Thank you.
Next, Dr. So Changwen. Thank you Chairman. I have some questions about the management personnel. The first reply and would like to follow up on is O four six. My question is whether. The government can set up an authority like the U R A. To oversee and manage the North Metropolis. This question was answered by the secretary a moment ago. Now, my follow-up question is. Once the North Metropolis was first proposed and then Dr. Starry Lee came up with a point. Dr. Lee argued the North Metropolis should be run as a special administrative zone within the S A R. So we should try a new approach to the NM. But I wonder if the government agrees and what the government thinks about this. I just wanna make sure this is consistent with the secretary's idea. That the NM should be divided into different land parcels. It would take twenty years to develop the NM and we also have to coordinate with Shenzhen to take forward the NM. So we will need a statutory body. With the necessary powers to oversee the NM's development. So I urge the government to actively consider this option. Now, my other point has to do with manpower. It's O O five. This is about the Support Service Center for Minority Owners. I'm looking at the establishment, just two government workers and then you have six non-government workers. Along with a hundred and seventy other professionals. It looks like a large team. But the secretary just said that. In the early days of the center, it should focus on publicity and education. So the two government workers will be doing the administrative tasks and also work on publicity and education. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're asking two people to take on so many tasks. Can they cope? Now, I'm in a bills committee. I know. The interests of many parties are at stake when it comes to compulsory sales. So I just hope that there is enough manpower to cope with the work. Now, on the question about the NM Authority and the special zone within the S A R. This question was answered, so a brief reply would too. Instead, I think the government should focus on the two workers at the Support Service Center. Secretary. On the point about setting up an authority, statutory or not, and also the point about setting up a special zone. In the the NM. There are several things to consider. So one is about a management structure to oversee everything. On top of that, you also need administrative procedures. For taking forward the NM. You can have both. Having a single authority oversee the entire NM. May not be. Easy to implement. Instead, putting in place industry parks might be the better way forward. Now, there are other options. Say we can consider task forces. For. Businesses to go to a single point of contact instead of having to go to multiple departments. That's something. We can take a serious look at. Now, on the Support Service Center. Or S M O X. This is not part of the government structure. S M O X. Is an independently-run body under the U R A. There are two workers at this point, but they are not government workers. Those two workers are hired by S M O X. And that center is funded by the U R A. There's flexibility because these are not government workers. And the center is not part of the government. When more cases come along. I believe there will be more manpower to cope with the cases. And we should also make greater use of the professionals in the community. Government departments also help out with public education and complete and publicity. Thank you. We move on to Mr. Andrew Lam. O four two. O O nine. From Mr. Chen Hau Fong. O five O from Mr. Edward Lau. O four two. Which is my question. My question has to do with the impact on brownfield site operators. A month or so ago, I raised this point. I asked about new ideas. The government found a hundred and twenty hectares of government land. To help these operators. I'm looking for details. I'm looking for the locations. And of these sites and when these sites can come on stream and you can give me the details after the meeting. Now, O five O, the question from Mr. Edward Lau. There are different ways to take forward the NM development. I support trying new measures. We're trying things out. Some may work better than others. Say you can do premium in installments or you can use. In in situ land exchange or non-in situ land exchange. All that can complicate your finances. So given the uncertainty ahead. My question for the Development Bureau is. Has the Development Bureau assessed how. Its finances will be affected? We want to get a sense of the government's financial position. I I wonder if there should be a task for the Development Bureau or the F S T B. Now, O O nine. It's about Operation Building Bright. I see a table, a detailed table, which is great work. And there are two categories of applicants. Kowloon City, Shenzhen, Porchuma, Wan Chai, Yaotian Wang. Many applications in the first two rounds, but then that number plunged in the third round. It's the other way around with the Southern District. Where you see a spike in applications in the third district. So why is that the case with the Southern District? Now, I'm looking at the third note. An application came in, but a building hasn't really paid. But again, the Southern District stands out. Way more money was paid in round three than in the first two rounds. Now, again, I don't expect an answer on the spot. Give me a supplementary reply afterwards. That would do. But I'm wondering. Why this happened? Why does the Southern District stand out? Now, you are past the three-minute mark. So for the first question, Brownfield Site Operators, let's provide written details after the meeting. Now, on the finances, a brief reply would do. So let's focus on the question about the Southern District. Chairman, we'll have to look into our details. We have to look at the context of the applications. I believe there are more old buildings in Wanchouhang and Aberdeen, so please look into that case. Now, on our analysis. Of the government's revenue and expenditure. We haven't done any analysis specific to the NM. We look at the government's revenue and expenditure as a whole. We do have such internal macro analyses. Covering the entire economy in relation to our revenue and expenditure. Next, Dr. Wendy Hong.
In twenty nineteen. We granted one billion dollars for NGOs to use idle government sites such as idle school premises to provide services on a short-term basis. That plan was to cover up to twenty twenty-nine, but then last year, twenty twenty-four, the entire funding dried up. So last year, the government came here for an extra five hundred million dollars to renew the scheme. I voted against the scheme. Still, the funding proposal went through. When you look at community nurseries, animal rehoming centers. I don't see any urgency in building such facilities given our fiscal deficit. Many projects are not cost-effective. Now, there are animal rehoming centers. They cost more than a hundred million dollars. So for adopting a single animal, it costs more than two hundred thousand dollars. Given the fiscal deficit we're in, is are we making sensible use of taxpayers' money by spending money like that? Now, these projects also involve temporary structures. We already have thirty thousand L P H units and twenty thousand T H flats. We don't even have a long-term plan on our spending on such temporary flats. We don't have any long-term plans. And then we're building even more temporary structures. I have grave reservations. Will the government rethink this funding scheme and stop granting money for. Projects that are not cost-effective? Now, in the years to come, we will see bond issuances of a hundred and thirty-three and a hundred and ninety billion dollars in bonds. You have to repay your bonds at some point. The more bonds you issue, the more you have to repay. Fifty-six percent of our future bonds will be used to cover existing bonds. That means less than half of our future bond proceeds will actually go into the NM development. So would can the government consider dedicated medium-to-long-term bonds just for the North Metropolis? Now, I want to raise a point I raised at a panel on development. It's about the NM. We already have the contour of the NM development. Have we taken a comprehensive view? Have we made of our mind as to which project should be started right away? And which project can wait? And which project can be taken forward by private players? Shouldn't we set our priorities for the different projects in the NM?
Alright, Secretary. Thank you. Regarding the second question about bond issuance. I'm afraid this is not within the purview of the Development Bureau. The Financial Secretary oversees the bond issuance program. He makes relevant arrangements. Regarding the funding scheme to support the use of vacant government sites by NGOs. I thank Dr. Wendy Hong for her suggestion. Let's see it this way, from the perspective of users. They're very happy about this scheme. They welcome it. There are a lot of government sites. I won't say they are the best sites. Actually, the best sites have been. Developed. These sites may be smaller. They may be in remote areas. We have this funding scheme because we want the NGOs to make good use of these sites. They may not be in the best locations in the city. But because NGOs can benefit much from the funding scheme. So we can see a lot of different facilities, a lot of different NGOs will benefit from this funding scheme. Actually, a lot of people encourage us to launch more sites under this under this funding scheme. We shouldn't just focus on mega developments or mega infrastructures in relation to the NM development. We are taking forward NM development at full steam. A few years ago, we focused on preparing for housing in Ku Tong North and Fanlang North. And now we have to focus on industrial sites. We need to attract. Companies to establish a foothold in the NM. Regarding Santin Technopole, we have started the advanced stage of construction works. In parallel, the I T I B is undertaking a study. They are studying how to allocate the industrial sites as soon as possible. We are moving at full steam. But then we need to attract industries or enterprises to come to the industrial land in the NM. Next, Mr. Bill Tang. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Secretary. I have a few questions, all of my questions. O seven six, O seven seven, and one one six. It's about the funding scheme to support the use of vacant government sites by NGOs. Space is resources as well. Under this funding scheme.
Under this funding scheme, does the government require contractors to comply with the national security law? As I understand, district offices and the S W D Social Welfare Department require contractors to comply with the national security law. Publicity is also involved. About oh seven seven, Harborfront, while Kowloon East plays a very important role in Harborfront developments. In Yautong Comprehensive or C D A, what is the progress of a promenade of fifteen meters? What is the progress? Question one one six about subdivided units. Complaints against S D U's about two hundred and forty seven removal orders. But then at the end of the reply, the figure one O two was mentioned. Which one is correct? A lot of enforcement officers are required to execute the removal orders. So do you have sufficient manpower? About one hundred to two hundred removal orders are issued every year. Do you have sufficient manpower to cope? Thank you. Regarding using vacant government sites by NGOs, S T Ts are basically used, and we have added the provision of complying with the national security law. Regarding the structures on the sites, are the provisional structures so they will actually go to waste in the long run? Well, we call them provisional structures because they aren't very tall, but it doesn't mean that they won't be used for a very long time. If the NGOs leave the site and the other organization will use the site, then these structures will still be usable. Regarding the Yautong C D A, there were different owners. I believe members member is referring to this. We have reached a consensus with owners that we will develop the C D A in phases. We already have sketches ready. All of us are focusing on phase one. We are looking forward to its commissioning, so I am cautiously optimistic. Regarding the S D U's in industrial buildings, I thank member for raising this issue. S D U's in industrial buildings were definitely not able to get the license. S D U's in industrial buildings are outlawed. We will amend the building's ordinance next month, next year rather. We will increase the penalty. In other words, when you change the land use of the industrial building, once discovered, will there be an immediate penalty system? When we increase the penalty, we do want to help the Buildings Department with enforcement actions. There is already a deterrent effect. We will conduct reviews along this line. Thank you. Next member, Mister Michael Tian. I'd like to follow up on my question. Oh eight one. Kaoyichao Artificial Islands, this is all I have been pursuing, but I have to emphasize. I'm not just talking about how much land can be created. There's a lot of land to be created in the North Metropolis, even beyond our imagination. Well, there is no Hongqiu Hong Kong Island Rail Link, then the the um Hongqiu Qianhai Railway Railway will we need to know where. Unless all of the business is about modern services, but I don't think this is the case. Most people come here to spend, to check in at the popular spots, and so on. So they can only take the Twin Ma Line to the urban area. The trains on the Twin Ma Line are already jam packed. In the coming five years, for those that are going to move in, there are about two hundred thousand or so. Definitely, there will be a lot of grievances. We need a timetable to discuss the commission of the Hongqiu Island Rail. Like the Kuomung Station of Long March's Bird Line is an underground station. There was nothing above the ground. For the promotion of the large scale land disposal in the N M, we have the um Hongqiu to Island West Rail Link. Two Ma Line, Hong Kong Shenzhen West Rail Link. There are different railways that provide great connectivity for people living in the area. So people holding that booklet are very are very happy about it. That explains a high number of tenders. In the subcommittee meeting on matters related relating to railways, we didn't see the most important railways. It vanished into thin air. This is from government papers. So it's not just about the supply of land. It's also about integration into the G B A. But all standard replies given by the administration, including the financial secretary, all of you failed to give me a clear timetable. Well, Mister Tian, you've spent three and a half minutes on your questions. Secretary, please be succinct. For the railway from um Hongqiu to Hong Kong Island via Artificial Islands, it is the best opportunity for us to connect Kaoyichang Artificial Islands and Hongqiu. We are just slackening our pace. We didn't give up on this project. We're still looking into the possibility of having this railway. Feasibility study is in the pipeline. Regarding a clear timetable, I believe the administration will monitor the progress. Every year we have a budget. And we plan ahead. We have a mid to a short to midterm forecast. A lot of changes can take place in a very short period of time, whether positive or negative. So in a timely manner, we explain to the public and to the council, but then we are still undertaking this study.
Your time is up. Sorry, we have to move on to the next member, Mister Chen Hongfeng. Number seven, number eight, and number nine, oh oh seven, it's the round the island trial. The government has put a lot of thought into the work and the work is paying off. But I need the secretary's help about the Shun Tech therapy peer section in Shangwang. Many people jog in the area. I think the undersecretary also jogs in the area. You have to go to the carriageway halfway through your jog, and that's not safe. So in the upcoming amendment to the protection of the harbor amendment ordinance, let's think about how we can fix that. Now, number eight. I thank the government for being responsive by amending the law for minor harbor front works. The footpath in Kennedy Town should be the among the first ones to open. So I wonder if we have a timetable as to when we can implement this new arrangement once the bill is amended. Now I turn to number nine. And this is about big building maintenance. There's a table buildings age thirty and above. I see a table setting out the compliance rate with the mandatory building inspection rate. Now, the rates tend to be lower less than half of most of the buildings. So the D A B has been calling for a different approach. Let people apply to the government for the government to get involved in building maintenance. The government may worry about the shortage of staff, but you can always outsource the work to the private sector. So three questions. Secretary, now the the first two questions have to do with the harbor friends. On the question about Shun Tech Center, on how we can allow people to stay on the pavement without having to go into the carriageway. Now for the Shun Tech location, we don't know if the protection of the harbor ordinance will help because that's part of a peer. Now for the footpath in Kennedy Town, that has been top of mind for us. We have been citing Kennedy Town as an example, but on the timing, when we can implement the new arrangement, we have to compete with other departments and bureaus for resources within the government. For us, of course, we want to be able to secure the resources soon on O B B. Now for the Buildings Department to get involved, that will that will require resources from the B D. The member proposed outsourcing. Still, the B D will have to monitor the work. The B D is under pressure from a variety of sources. I'm not ruling out anything today, but I cannot just commit to this idea from the member. I do note the member's suggestion. Mister Vincent Cheng. Oh two oh, it's about Operation Building Bright. Now, my question is that O B B has been helpful to owners of old buildings, more than three thousand applications. Now I want to focus on the first category, one thousand four hundred and fifty four. Completion rate, two hundred and eight. That's not a very high level, roughly twelve percent. But some you may say some applications came in under the second or third round. In twenty eighteen, first round, there was a number. Okay, so have we cleared all of the applications from the first round? Enhancements were put in place in twenty twenty for the second round. So are we seeing faster process under the enhancements? Are we doing better in terms of clearing the backlog? Now, yesterday, we talked about joint property management. In fact, that was a meeting on month two days ago. Now, urban redevelopment is proceeding slowly. There will be more and more older buildings. So when round four of O B B comes along, can we also encourage the participation of buildings taking part in B M pass in joint boot property management? So all three questions have to do with O B B. Secretary, on the first question, we don't have the details at hand, so can you provide the details after the meeting? On the second question, last year, new measures were put in to streamline tendering. The U R A can help the owners with tendering when the owners struggle with it. The enhancements were applied to round three applications, and the new measures are paying off. So things move quickly. Inspectors are involved very soon. On joint property management, on whether we can link up joint property management with O B B, we can explore this idea with the H Y A B. Mister Tony Te. Oh eight three. Six billion dollars went into the M B I S. In twenty twenty three, one thousand two hundred and ninety six applications. But not much was approved. Only a hundred and three applications were approved. The government cited the concern about flooding the market with projects affecting the market, et cetera. But given the slow property market, can we relax things a bit? The reply says you issue the approval in principle letter in one or two and a half years time. Can we speed up the work? Now, one oh five. It's about the Joint Office for Investigating Joint Office or Investigation of Water Seepage Complaints. Now for completion rate of investigation within ninety days, sixty point five percent. So can we adopt smart tools to speed up investigation, given that the percentage of cases investigated within ninety days in twenty twenty three was only sixty five percent? Now I turn to one one eight. It's about unauthorized building works. The Buildings Department says they do not compile stats on removal orders. We all know big data matters. Can we do something about that? The focus will be on serious U B Ws. So let's compile data. Let's use the data to achieve better results. So three questions. M B S, Joint Office, and U B Ws. Uh, the Director of Buildings will take the second and third questions. Permanent Secretary for the question on M B S. The member asked about O B B. That table shows that we received one thousand three hundred applications in twenty twenty three. We granted a hundred and three applications in that year. Because we invited round three applications in twenty twenty three, so we received more than a thousand applications. The U R A took two to three years to look at the applications in phases. Because in that year, we took in a large number of applications within one year. That's not to say that we clear all the applications at the same time. The number of contractors who can perform building inspection on the market will have a bearing on the work. Now on the other two questions. Now about water seepage. To move faster, we will need more resources. We have also adopted a new approach. We have three steps. We're trying to merge steps two and three. And we have started piloting this new approach in some places. Now, the reply says that we meet the ninety-day target in sixty-five percent of the times. Now, when we merge steps two and three, we can meet this target at sixty-five, sixty percent, but we managed to complete the investigation in sixty-something days. Now, on different kinds of U B Ws. We did not have such distinguished distinctions between severe and minor U B Ws in the past. So as we amend the law, we will look at ways to make such distinguish, to make such distinguished distinctions. The old removal orders did not come with such distinctions, but with new orders, we can make greater use of technology to distinguish between different kinds of U B Ws. That will help. Next, Mister Peter Xu. O one eight. Now, O one eight, North and Metropolis. Now, members have called on the government to move faster at greater efficiency. Now, for construction materials. Materials that meet our country standards may be cheaper, and I support the use of such materials. Wagers are also a major problem. It's a huge cost. We import labor based on the median wage for local workers. And given that, for these large developments, can we have special arrangements? Now, O three one. It's about the harbor front. Our blueprint for tourism development also mentions making use of the harbor front. Now, of course, we want to encourage people to make good use of the harbor front, but we don't get many applicants to the funding scheme. So let's think of ways to make good use of either side of the Victoria Harbour. Now, some people doing wedding photographs have told me that wedding photography is an industry. Different places are trying to get couples to visit their places to take their wedding pictures. And when we can do that, that will mean more business for photographers and also the makeup specialists. But when people try to take their wedding pictures at the harbor front, they're asked to go away. So can we make arrangements so that people can actually take their wedding pictures at the harbor front? And if those photographers are are illicit workers, of course, we should prosecute them.
All right, two questions, the N M C O. North and Metropolis Development and Victoria Harbour. Well, these two questions are very different. Construction costs are close to our heart. We do want to compress construction costs. One important aspect is the cost of materials. There are cheaper materials all over the world in order to remove barriers. We have our own building technology institute. Steel, concrete. We want to verify different construction materials. Just we need to do once, then the construction sector will not have to worry about getting certification aft- after that. And that covers mainland materials as well. We hope this will be helpful. In relation to wages. They account for some three, well, thirty to forty percent of construction costs. And we are a developed city. It is actually very difficult to reduce the wages. There are views that the importation of labor doesn't have to follow the median wages. But that has to do with the importation of labor. Different sectors have different views. We may reduce manpower needs or shorten the construction period. This way, we can also reduce construction costs. In relation to the question about the Victoria Harbour, I thank member for relating this this view to us. If member can let us know which exactly exactly which spot along the Victoria harbors that will help us a lot. Different areas are managed by different departments. Yes, wedding photography is an industry. We should allow photographers to take photographs over there. Next, Mister Shanghai Long. I need to commend the Development Bureau and Miss Bernadette Lin. In the budget last year, a total of twenty-three million dollars were saved. One hundred and sixty-eight civil service positions fewer. Miss Bernadette Lin responded to our questions with composure. No matter how difficult our questions are. Some secretaries are quite agitated when they answer our questions, but Miss Bernadette Lin is very cool, calm, and collected. D E V B P L O seven seven. There was a signing of E O Is. The ceremony was star-studded. We're going to have three um, large-scale land sites, and we 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 receive a total of twenty-two E O Is. Are they from twenty-two different enterprises? If yes. Among eighty-five, what is the percentage? How many of them are from the eighty-five enterprises? Another question relates to bond issuance. We do need land to develop the N M. In the coming five years. We will have one hundred and fifty billion dollars to one hundred and ninety-five billion dollars in in relation to infrastructure bonds. Based on information I have collected, on the eighth of May twenty twenty-four, there was an amendment to an ordinance for sustainability bonds plus infrastructure bonds, the total amount could not exceed five hundred billion dollars. Based on the amendment. Sustainability sustainability bonds already about two hundred billion dollars. So the balance is three hundred billion dollars. If the government needs to issue bonds of about seven hundred fifty billion dollars to one trillion dollars, it seems the amounts don't tally. Can the administration explain to us? It's about three minutes. Well, just one minute left. Let's see if the secretary wants to focus on any question. Bond issuance isn't within the purview of the Development Bureau alone. We don't have information at hand. We received a total of twenty-two E O Is in relation to N M development. They are from twenty-two organizations or enterprises. So how many of these twenty-two prices are from the eighty-five enterprises? Well, we don't want to conduct this analysis. That is because we don't want to put any pressure on those who have signed the E O Is. We already told them the E O Is are general. They just need to express interest, express interest in the items. But yes, overall speaking, yes, they are from the eighty-five enterprises. So maybe the second round, if we have sufficient time, well, we'll have to let the next member speak. Next, Mister Edward Long. Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up on D E V B one three O. It's about closed recycling banks. Many people said that they had come across bogus closed recycling banks. Then someone can make make a profit using these bogus closed recycling banks by selling these used clothes. Last year, five hundred and fifty-nine used clothes recycling banks were dealt with. Averaging one thousand to two thousand dollars per bank. Well, I do understand costs are involved. But will it give rise to a culture? A culture that is those who collect the banks will make a profit from selling the clothes inside the youth clothes banks. Well, my question is, can we um sign a contract with the contractors? Many members of the public fell victim to these bogus used clothes recycling banks. Given the fact that many people are willing to put clothes into the recycling banks. Can we set aside an area for, say, N G Os, units, or companies? Can we increase tax? Or can we charge in order to increase the revenue in relation to tax? Well, I understand what the member means. Probably the government should play the coordinating role and to designate an area for legal collection or legal recycling of used clothes. Well, we will have to talk to the E E B as this is within their purview, but we'll definitely work with the E E B. Well, I'll give the floor to the Director of Lands, Mister Morris Lu. Am I coming through? Please switch on the mic for Mister Lu. Thank you. We have a clear system to handle used clothes recycling banks in the H A D. There are areas designated for N G Os to apply to place used clothes recycling banks in these areas for interested N G Os that can apply with the Home Affairs Department. Indeed, there are unknown organizations who put used clothes recycling banks in areas not designated for this purpose. We have mounted joint operations with the F H D to clear such recycling banks. We have seen an improvement in this situation recently. Thank you. Next member, Doctor Hu Yi Simon Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up on two questions. There are D E V B O five six. In the reply, the administration referred to the Yunlong Southern Hongshui Qiuha Chen industrial industrial site to help those affected by the government's policy. Rehousing arrangements were mentioned. Short-term tenancy and E G A excursio allowances, these are the main ways of compensation. I'd like the administration to let us know more about the um arrangements, timetable, and so on. The other question is about O O two. In the reply on the administration. The government didn't provide concrete information in relation to Doctor Ben Chen's question. Thank you. Thank you. On two fronts. Secretary. The first question, I'll give the floor to the P S. For the second question. Have we calculated the economic return when we provide M S B, multi-story buildings for modern industries? Tenders, land leases, the scope is very wide. One of the sites is logistics or vehicle maintenance or vehicle repair workshop. Logistics covers a lot of areas. So we didn't conduct any economic assessment or evaluation. The reason why we promote M S Bs is that we want to provide land for the industries for development. We also want to help brownfield operators to move to another area or to upgrade or to rehouse them. So we don't just take into account the economic revenue that one single building can bring us. P S, about the upgrading and transformation of brownfield operators. Thank you. If we can arrange for brownfield operators to go to the M S Bs, what supporting measures can we provide? Well, a few main points. For such floor space. We want to have intermediary. Services can be provided to help brownfield side operators to move up the value chain or the industry chain on rentals. Soon after they have moved into the M S Bs, we want to charge a rent similar to that when they are using the brownfield sites. We want to provide them with a transitional period so that they can settle into the environment. We adopt the two envelope approach in relation to the technical aspect for the developers who have who have won the tender. They will have to help brownfield operators to upgrade and transform. Thank you.
Two members are waiting to speak for the first round. In fact, Reverend Kun will speak for the first round, and then Mister Edward Lau will speak for the second round. And then that conclude, and then the meeting will conclude. So I draw the line here. Reverend Peter Kun. Now, I have a broad question without referring to any specific reply. Now, for the social welfare sector, we try to make the most of the land available. We run into difficulties in land and planning. I have just I have just heard about streamlining procedures, so I wonder. There are issues around modular integrated construction, so I'm wondering if there's any help. The Development Bureau can help the social welfare sector about. Secretary. Now, on schemes for the social welfare sector, there's a scheme under the Labor and Welfare Bureau. And indeed, there is planning land and approval involved. The Development Bureau is happy to look at streamlining procedures for the social welfare sector. Now, on M I C, we are not mandating M I C for all project. After finding out about some projects, we decided not to mandate M I C for social welfare facilities. A proposal goes to the Town Planning Board. We give help to the N G O. Which is the applicant. On how to address the questions raised by the T B B, so we're happy to offer help and we keep doing such work. Chairman, some N G Os struggled with these matters. They are at an advanced stage, but then they are asked to look into M I C. So maybe I can take up this matter with the government after the meeting, but I really hope that the government can give help. Because some in the social welfare sector are struggling, so please talk to Reverend Kun after the meeting. Last one, Mister Edward Lau. Thank you, I want to follow up on a point from my first round. Some of my questions were not answered, and it's about paying for what you build. And also large-scale land disposal. So. When you pay for what you build, you don't have to pay the premium based on the maximum floor area, instead, you pay based on the actual construction area. So in on in the building covenant, let's do something about the B C. And then you also, and then you also should consider the purpose of the construction. Say you have a site for non-domestic use. You can either put a luxury store there or just put a mom-and-pop store there, and the value will be very different depending on what you build. Now, on large-scale land disposal. E O Is were invited. Now, I think the government is working on the tendering, so I wonder if there's flexibility. I wonder if further changes can be made to these three sites. So can we also consider the two envelope approach as an alternative to the model where the highest bidder wins? So two questions, first, the pay-for-what-you-build approach. We're exploring this approach, meaning the premium is based on the actual construction area. And what the developer actually wants to build, say it's a commercial site. You can build an office or a retail and dining facility. It can also be a recreational facility. Different rates of premium will apply depending on what you actually build, so we're exploring this idea. We hope that we can put forward this proposal on the pay-for-what-you-build approach this year. Now, on. Whether more flexibility can be given to businesses when it comes to the building covenant. This essentially means more flexibility in when the developer completes the project. So we're in a dilemma. We want to move fast. Each such area comes in ten to twenty hectares. And we ask a developer to complete the building in ten years or maybe even six or seven years. But if we give the developer more flexibility, that means the project will take longer to complete, so this is a balancing act. We'll have to take into account the views and then we will come up with something, a period under the building covenant that businesses are happy with. Now, on tendering, whether we can do two envelope instead of just the highest bidder wins, we keep an open mind. We said the government preferred the highest bidder wins. Two envelope requires assessment and that will take effort, but of course, we can look at the feedback we actually get before reaching a decision. Thank you, so that concludes all the questions. So, and I adjourn the meeting for this session, our next session will start at three fifty P M, thank you.